Now calling City Council Regular Meeting to order for honest debate. Please rise to the invitation and pledge allegiance in the name of our council members.
What a pleasure. Father, we continue to give you glory and praise as we gather here tonight, Father God. As we start, Father God, the regular council, we ask that we will be good to God, as continuously, Father God. We pray for the first responding about city and about county and about state, Father God. We ask that, Father God, that we do not divide, but come together, Father God, for your goodness. We ask you, Father God, that you would lead us, Father God, with your stretched out hand, your powerful arm, Father God, and we will come together as one, Father God, because we do this for the glory of God, not for ourselves, Father God, but let us, Father God, be a blessing to others as we make decisions tonight, Father God, decisions that will be everlasting in our minds and our hearts. Let us make the decisions, Father God, that you will put upon our hearts. So we thank you, Father God, for this gathering, for this council, and for each and every person in this building. Maybe someone that came in that's different from the last meeting, Father, in the name of Jesus, who just prayed your blessing, the bludgeons of each and every person, over every meeting that we have in this place, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
The United States of America, in your humble which is safe, when nation under God, in the deliverers he addresses all.
Take a seat. Please have a roll call.
Councilmember Gray, here. Councilmember Johnson, here. Councilmember Sutherland. Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Here.
Mayor Anderson.
Here. Thank you. First up, item number four, we have the minutes from July 1/6, regular council meeting. Do we have a motion?
Motion for a review from July 1/6, regular council meeting.
We have a motion now, second. Are there any questions? The panel will call a roll.
Councilmember Gray, yes.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Thank you. Item number five, we have a lien reduction request, code enforcement, due from magistrate. Randy, I see your name. Are you going to break us on that?
Uh, yes, sir. We had a magistrate hearing completely separate from our normal ones in regarding to a lien reduction request for two properties, 907 South Palmer Avenue and 560 East Green Street. Mr. Suarez is present in the audience. He is the new owner of said properties. He is not the person that owns and violates during his ownership. So, um, we did receive a recommendation from magistrate in regards to the lien reduction request that we had attached to the packets.
We see a number here of $7,500?
Yes, sir. That's roughly 10% of the overall of to the city from the previous violator.
Is that in accordance to our new schedule that we approved?
That is a recommendation from, um, the magistrate. And I think Jerry probably could go fine more onto the magistrate.
How far off on this toll that from the, um, what we talked about before with previously approved?
I honestly never been. This is the first one with this new resolution that's passed.
So, well, the schedule is here in the back. I didn't actually do the background.
Yeah, it's, it is here. This is the, uh, the maiden voyage of the lien matrix.
Exactly. Exactly. We, as you called, proposed a matrix system and, uh, for, uh, lien forgiveness, so to speak, and some requirements with regard to how you would get that forgiveness. Anybody that, um, sought over a certain percentage of their lien forgiven, they would have to pay a deposit, pay for the cost of the special magistrate, and special magistrate would here, put them under, under oath, and, um, as to why they were entitled to get, um, get it forgiven, and make a ruling based on their, our, our code. I thought that the special magistrate did a great job with this first, uh, first one. I mean, I'm not saying one way or the other with regard to the amount that, that, because I didn't hear the evidence he did. So, um, but, but I, I think the way he did it was as just as I envisioned.
When I read his, um, his summary in here, it sounded pretty good. I mean, it sounded like he did what he was supposed to be doing. And that's why I was asking, what was the, um, I didn't see the, um, the, I think if you said it's 10%?
Yeah, the original outstanding balance on the two properties was just short of $75,000.
And I think our people would say 10%, right?
So 10% of that would be the 7,500, and that's how that.
Which I thought was fair.
Again, I, I, I believe it would be important for Mr., again, this is a suggestion that Mr. Suarez speak on behalf of his ownership on what he plans on doing with that property to maybe get a little bit more.
Mr. Suarez, would you mind approaching the podium there? Please give your name and address for the record, Nick.
Yes. My name is Pablo Suarez. My address is 2027 Lake Otter Drive.
Okay. So I assume you purchased properties to fix them up? You want to tell us a little bit about what you have planned for them?
Yes, sir. Actually, this is a family, uh, purchase. My sister, my brother, and my nephew of mine to purchase a property, uh, that plans on developing, uh, the property. We're thinking of 20 to 30 lots, single-family residential, uh, for, for middle-income families. Uh, there will be some lots on the lake and then some interior lots. And, uh, depending on the outcome of this meeting and this reduction, we will move forward with the, the local engineers, uh, to start the development process.
Okay. We have any questions for Mr. Suarez?
I'd just like to say, I've seen the property and I like the way you kept, you cleaned it up. You did a very good job on that. So in reality, I have no problem with the lien reduction of $7,500.
Thank you. It's going to be more again tomorrow, so.
It's, it's a lien reduction from 75 to 7,500. So, you know, um, uh, the, I, I think that, um, you know, it's, that's what he had decided. He heard the evidence and that it's a good decision. It's like nice to get property back into, into circulation again.
Sure. And, and skimming over the, uh, the matrix here, it looks to be in the moderate and moderate. So I'm assuming that's where he felt it belonged. From what I read, I don't see anything that is in, uh, in obvious opposition to that. So I have no problem with it.
No. I, I, I think it's, uh, we talked about this for years, about forgiving everything, forgiving everything. And we finally got to a point where I think we came up, Jerry came up with a great table that was fair. And I think that they offer 7,500 is fair. And I think it does a great service for the city. And all I can say is welcome, and please go forward in my opinion.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to affect?
I'm all that we approve, approved, uh, requested lien reduction in the amount of $7,500, $7,500, which was special magistrate recommended.
There's a second?
Okay.
We have a motion in a second. Further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. Mr. Suarez, thank you very much, and we look very much forward to seeing what you can do.
Thank you, Councilmember, Member of the Mayor and staff. We will get to work on some of the, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right. Item number six, we have an interlocal agreement between Highlands County and Avon Park before the local options. Melody?
Highlands County and the city of Avon Park, actually Highlands County enters into the local agreement that would all be municipalities in the county for share of the local option gas tax and his receipts. The agreement is updated every five years. This year, our share of proceeds percentage went down to 7.27%.
Okay. Any questions on that?
Any reason why it went down?
Yeah, I wanted to cover one.
Okay. So it went down because our audit was late, so they go based on the last five years of audits. So our, uh, 21, uh, 1920 audit was late, so they don't have those, um, numbers to go by. So it's decreased based on what the state said we would get by 1.13%. And that equates to $119,000.
Ouch.
But with Melody here, if we can keep her here, the audits won't be late again because she's been doing a lot of stuff personally. But here isn't going.
Do you get the feeling we're depending on you a lot?
That's why I'm, I'm here.
Job security.
I have one question here, uh, maybe just a general question, but I believe there's more people in Avon Park than there is Seabreeze. I'd like to know why Seabreeze gets a larger percentage than Avon Park.
It goes by the amount of revenue?
It doesn't go by population. It does revenue and population. It's the same question we all. It's a good question. Jerry and I had the same one. I sent it down to the county and they responded. I said, I'll ask him next time, too.
Jerry, do we have to read this, uh, into the record or we just simply make a motion? Do we have a motion?
I'm making a motion to remove, uh, item number three.
Second.
Okay, we have, we have a motion in a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. Item number seven, this will be a public hearing for the second reading of ordinance 08-2021.
So, ordinance of City of Avon Park, Florida, amending Avon Park to provide land, well, providing regulations for artisan manufacturing and craft food and beverage production uses specifically in Article 2, identifying artisan manufacturing and craft food and beverage production as a new table 2.04.01A. I'm in the Article 3, providing supplemental development standards for artisan manufacturing and craft food and beverage production uses in section 3.11.02. And amending Article 9, providing definitions for artisan manufacturing and craft food and beverage production, providing that so food, right, the competition, right, for effective. Do we make any changes to this? I didn't, I didn't work on this. It's just, or we will find a.
Yeah, there was some changes from last meeting. They identified at the last page of this packet here. Do we need a motion first, Jerry?
You can talk about it before.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Thank you. Good evening.
Yes.
My name is Dana Radel. I am a senior planner with Central Department of Regional Planning Council. This is the second reading for artisan manufacturing and craft food and beverage production. We are introducing new text amendments and new language regarding artisan manufacturing, which is any manufacturing or production, including assembly and transformation of raw materials to produce lower-order custom-made products and goods. And we're also including craft food and beverage production, which include a small-scale production and more preparation of food or beverages. So the way these hearings ran is they came to City Council on June 20th, sorry, June 28th. And the City Council voted commandlessly to approve the proposed amendments, uh, but there were some changes. The first change being that council requested outdoor storage not be permitted in the C4 district without a special exception or some type of public hearing to allow it. So we broke down the uses in two portions of the table releases, and any artisan manufacturing and craft food and beverage production is allowed with no outdoor storage in C1, C2, C3, C4, I1, and I2. But then we broke it down again to say that if A is permitted in those districts, except for C4, which requires a special exception, and is reflected with an S on that table and highlighted in gray, which is the exception. A little hard to read. I apologize for that. To reinforce that requirement, we added additional language to say where outdoor storage and production activities are proposed on property so C4 makes use commercial, such activities may be permitted in accordance with the intent and purpose of the supplemental standards established in this section and shall be approved through the city's special exception process. So we really leaned in on that and brought it home, and we brought it in, uh, two separate areas of the code to really make sure that it stood out. Then there was the request to remove smaller quantities because it would be difficult to regulate. So any purpose and intent, we removed the language of smaller quantity. So I won't read the whole thing. You all know the purpose and intent of this section. So after those changes were requested, it went to the planning board for their recommendations. So they saw it with the, the requested changes from City Council, and they recommended approval. And tonight, we have three options for motions as well. Staff is available to answer any questions.
Does council have any questions? This is going to be a public hearing. So the public hearing for ordinance 08-2021 is now open. Anyone from the crowd wishing to speak on this ordinance can now do so. The council podium. Anyone at all? Seeing no takers, public hearing for ordinance 08-2021 is now closed. We'll bring it back to the council. Council have any questions or changes?
There's no changes tonight, except that we can make a motion to approve warrants.
That is correct. I just want to check the one and real quick. Okay. So whenever, uh, in the back of the packet, in the highlighted section, where you talked about taking out the generally smaller quantities, we see that was highlighted, we see that was talked about. But then whenever you look at the, uh, front portion, this will be page 4 of 6, it's still in there. But I just want to verify that, uh, that is going to be taken out. This will be on page 4 of 6, under the 3.11.02. Purpose and intent. Third line down, still has the generally in smaller quantities there.
Yeah, you're, you're right. I can see that. So we'll make sure to get that stripped through before we have the actual word in some.
Okay.
And you're right, we need to make that to the order.
Make that a portion. Yeah. Yeah. Well, let's, let's go through all the discussion and make one motion to kind of catch.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, in your opinion, this, uh, in no way, um, would block or subdivide other industries from where it comes.
Not that I can see. I really see it as something that would urge small businesses. It won't include any other, it doesn't have negative impact on the business that I perceive.
Right. Obviously, that was an intent of the council to provide a place for people to innovate. If some new type of business comes along we don't know about, obviously, they would have a place to go and flush that out and hopefully grow a business in depth. Okay, that's the only things, the only notes I had. Oh, uh, the other thing was on page 5 of 6, under 9. We have silos are permitted. Obviously, this would more or less talk about, um, like craft breweries typically have silos for their hops or corn or what have you. In that, you have manufacturing. I know in some types of manufacturing, particularly like in, uh, computer manufacturing, they do have air quality stuff that they need. Do you think it would be prudent to add in some type of air quality equipment as well? Because they can't have fumes, so that's going to be further to the point that they need to have air quality vendors. And if you look at a restaurant, they have vents, you know, it's kind of commonplace already.
So, we're studying a lot of the things that we do around the outside of the structure. So would people really regularly decide to say whether.
This would be for air quality equipment that protrudes through the roof, floors on the outside of buildings, similar to what a silo.
Um, that is something that we can look into, but I would believe that there's some general standards throughout the code that would cover that if there was excessive amount of fumes or anything like that. I believe that there are other sections of the code that we'd be able to rely on.
So would they be able to add that air quality equipment to take care of those issues without having to then get pushed out of town and go to the world?
So, does it require it as part of the regulations?
I'm just simply saying, if you, if you look at number nine, it's the silos are permitted accessory structure. Would we want to add silos and air quality equipment are permitted as a accessory structure?
Oh, I see what you mean. Yes.
We don't want to encourage someone to make fumes. We don't, that's the last thing we want to do is have some type of manufacturing that irritates everyone that walks by.
Yeah.
So we've got the small quantities, removing that and air quality equipment. So far. Is there anything else?
You moved the, the item approval with the changes of the.
We have a second move from, uh, Councilmember Gray.
Second.
And we have a second from Senator Johnson. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. Thank you. Item number eight, temporary updates. We have administrative comments and recommendations, a special assessment for law enforcement.
With what's being, I was asked to, uh, report back on where you could, uh, do a special assessment of law enforcement services that you do with fire. And historically, you had taught, you know, to do so, and it continues as such. Um, there was some intent, 2015, pass a law, a bill to allow it, and it didn't go anywhere. And I see nothing, no further movement on it since, so it's going into lawful. Uh, I did also, uh, check to see if there was any city that had one, even though it was lawful when I'm lawful. Could find any that I could locate that had one, and I will tell you that the law had changed. There wasn't a stamp to you. You can pick it up on enforcement assessments. So, um, that's where that is.
Okay. Any questions for Jerry on that? Item number nine.
The last meeting asked me to consider the, uh, request for, uh, the scooters, um, fur scooters and, um, uh, the sort of electric scooters that can get on line and so on. I, I did a little thing on that, but basically, uh, it's my recommendation, only good news I can, but it's my recommendation is what it comes down to, that you, um, do so, that you pass an ordinance with some regulation associated with that sound self-serving. Since I put that together, but I, I, um, I think that what was presented to you was strictly a whole harnessing and a certification that's sufficient just by itself, but, um, the cities that I'd seen in particular, uh, basically, uh, most of, a predominant number of them have, um, passed regulations and, and made modifications they thought fit their, their, um, their cities. You know, like, uh, obviously, you don't want to waste 27, things like that. And that, uh, a burn on the front of the car. So, um, that's my recommendation. I do, it's possible motions. You approve that, and I guess the third motion would be just to, uh, approve it without the ordinance and just get a more comprehensive agreement. That would also be a possibility. My recommendation is that you have an ordinance in order to, to use it in control, in a proper manner. And at some point, you might be looking on those, too.
Sure. I would certainly be in favor of constructing city attorney that comes with an ordinance for us to pass. Um, you know, I think all the citizens, uh, that have the ability to ride them tend to enjoy them. You know, there are really nothing but good things. The only bad things I've heard is, you know, maybe just placing them or something to that effect.
Well, in Chicago, they, you know, they, they stopped it for a while because they were leaving on the middle of sidewalk.
Right.
And, um, and that's why I asked him a question about this, is now that what they're doing with all the owners are doing, like in Daklaws and Asheville, you couldn't stop your recording of your, your cost until you took a picture of it and showing that you put it in the right place. That doesn't stop somebody else from really doing what you, uh, but at least you can show them where it needs to be. Uh, people throwing trees and throwing rivers and stuff like that, but that's their issue as opposed to ours.
Right.
Um, we just want to make sure that safety-wise, it's, um, it's, it's kept to a decent standard.
So you're going to do us an ordinance?
Yeah, not, it's not going to be really comprehensive. It's not going to be a huge ordinance, but, but just something to get us started in this.
Yeah. Okay.
I, I have, I have several ordinance, so if y'all get a chance to read this over and you have any comments as to something you really particularly want to see, let me know. I'll work on them. Those, those are both big cities, um, they're probably regulating a lot more than that. I think you probably should start out at anyway.
I looked at the ones from Tampa. That's a really good question, though. I think my main concern is where exactly are they going to safely ride these scooters? I mean, if they're not on the sidewalk, and you're on Main Street where you have parking, turning all the way up and down, to me, I'm just concerned about safety of somebody coming powerfully now or attacking, you know, driving on a two-lane highway going both directions and as well as the city's responsibility if there's a legal action taken. So I'm, I'm no more concerned other than that, but I like the idea. I think it promotes, you know, people to be active in the city and, and, but I'm very concerned about back to where they're going to ride, the safety and the legal action that could come from that. So that's, I do have some concern.
Oh, there is absolutely a possibility of legal action, um, you know, your, especially, you know, your rights away, but that's the indemnification whole harnessing part, part four. And, um, that's what they're directly, they're a pretty large company, uh, and, uh, not a local company to sit basically using their own charges, repairs, and so on. Um, yeah, I, I, that, that's really the focus of what I, I think we need to do is try and do as much as we can on the safety aspect of it. I don't think we want to, 10 years on here, start with, I think about the age you want to leave that to, yeah, because that will be one of the issues. Um, it says in the statute, you can lower it to 15. Uh, they, they do 20, 20, you want to be legal in the state, but you can lower it to 15, or you can actually lower, even lower the areas that are congested and things like that. Um, seem to me that one of the cities did 12 miles now, um, overall, but, um, I mean, those things to look at if you want to, you know, give us some feedback. I appreciate it. That way I can, I know where you guys want to head with this.
In the, in my mind, they tend to probably fit into the same rough category as bicycles. And, uh, one of the things about bicycles that are particularly irritating to motorist, uh, is more or less the, the routes that they travel. You know, most bicycles are going to be a long pass. They're going to be on the road. I have a feeling these are, other than probably Main Street, they're more than likely going to be in residential areas.
Well, the, the, um, in order to be in your rights away, you have to have an ordinance. In order for you to allow them on the sidewalk, you have an ordinance. But they have to be your sidewalk, your right-of-way. As I mentioned at the end when he was here, he needs to get through DOT for, uh, Main Street, but, uh, the sidewalks on Main Street, which are all by the DOT. And, um, he didn't seem to think that was an issue, so.
Right.
We're certainly not going to approve him doing it. We're going to approve that.
Sure.
Did you hear anything back then, that you have nothing there?
No.
You got a thing?
Uh, I haven't heard any more from him, but I do have the contract that he gave to, uh, our, our, sent that to me, which is really not a contract. It's just an indemnification whole harness agreement. And, uh, you know, it's, it's pitifully little for, you know, what we're talking about, maybe, anyway. But I really liked it myself.
You're right. How is this, this, um, the, the school is different from the, um, bicycles? Or the, uh, or the, um, motorized, um, um, wheelchairs, anything like that? Would that be a different?
Motorized wheelchairs, totally different. Bicycles, different. However, it's, if you all mentioned that, the state, um, um, is treat, treats them like bicycles for the most part, even if they're late. Obviously, but it follows this bicycle statute, which says that you can't drive right up the street. You know, you can ride a bike path, but I don't think we have any bike paths, really. So, yeah, this, we, we were to go here in the city, except the sidewalk. You know, your city rights away if you allow that, which I, I would suggest you do, as long as it's. And, and then just look at it again. If you don't like it, you know, it's making people mad because they're trying to get to work with somebody doing, you know, 20 miles an hour. Although I think on your, your city, your, your neighborhood streets, I think the students look much more than that. So I'll, I'll go ahead and take a stab at it, you know, Stan Park and the other, the other one, I think Fort Lauderdale is considering doing it now as well. And Orlando Hill Rock, I'm very concerned. Everybody's going to go this route because they're, they're very, very popular. It was going to be the segways, but segways are way too expensive.
Yeah.
People, you know, they're hard, much harder to ride than these are.
I still.
They're fun, too.
I still not being utilized for students, um, especially right up Main Street to the high school, back and forth for lunchtime and something like that.
Well, it, it's the college, the college is inside of the city.
And they do have a light path that the mall will be able to.
And they do have a bike path, they're all available for.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
So, all right, I will do that if, if that's the only thing the council.
I don't hear anyone vote.
I had, I had one other.
One other little thing.
I'm hoping we pull it off.
Just a minute steal of time here. Uh, well, before I came back to you guys, I raised my rate to two hundred dollars an hour, but then I backed it off again with my, my other cities because I, I looked at finances again and it was okay three years ago. Um, um, but, um, I, things are rolling again, and so I moved up to two hundred dollars an hour, I moved all the cities, I represent two hundred. Yeah, it's just, it's twenty five dollars. I had the same rate for one seventy five, which is unspeakably low for a certified city county attorney, um, uh, for, since two thousand eleven. We've got at least two thousand eleven, so it's been there a long time. And it's mostly because I, as you know, I don't have an office on it, so I have paralegals. I get their services from the tax award and they, they just bill you for the time, so I don't have to hire and keep them around and pay, pay all the overheads associated with that.
I just got one question, I really understand that one problem. But on the first page down here, where it says paralegal, when you bill that hundred and thirty five thousand out, I think it's about the third, um, uh, line down here. It said the city agrees, um, the city agrees to also pay my expenses for attending more, not more than two annual conferences. Is that the full, we're going to pay the full or would you, would you distribute it out between your different cities?
Allocate it.
Allocate, okay, yes.
And so, you know, and that's because I, you all are the only ones I have to keep C L E's for, other than my Florida bar, I have to have city county local government C L E's. And it also helps you because I notify you about changes in the logs and things like that when I go to these. Uh, there's usually two good ones, the Florida bar does, uh, uh, city county local government one. And then the Florida municipal attorneys association does a really good one, which I actually went to again this year. The Florida bar one was, um, not canceled, but it was virtual and I, I literally shoot myself. Three days of, of virtual meetings, so, um, but next year they'll probably do it again. But if for some reason I look through their agenda and it's not good, then I, I would probably attend something else like the, the, um, city managers association and so on. They have good stuff as well.
And my second question is, if this is a pass this evening, when would this go into effect?
October first.
October first.
I try to do it in conjunction with your budget.
Okay, she gave you a knock, we're good.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Darius?
I have one, uh, looking at item number B on the second page about the three hundred dollars for the, uh, the Kelly stuff. How, how much did that work with this recently?
Um, well, recently, you know, the new core one is the only one that we had recently, but, um, it should, it should start building back up again. And I didn't worry about it, uh, a few years since two thousand eight too much because it wasn't a whole lot of growth. But, um, uh, you know, the idea there is if you build them, then you should, you know, for, for my time, I can't build them.
Okay.
But I should be able to make, you know, close, this is still not what I charge private clients.
No.
But it should be able to make close what I charge my private clients.
Perfect answer, I'm satisfied, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there's no further questions? Do we have a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve item number, we can go to the city attorney's legal brief, they please.
Second.
We have a motion and second, now call the roll.
County member Gray?
Yes.
County member Johnson?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last one.
I have one other item, but it's, it's actually going to, it's going to come up with the city manager's thing on fam.
Okay, great. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll do that last because the seed low, little clarity just got back on. Just a quick one on the C B D G, um, the, um, housing re- revocation program. There's an invitation out to bid, bids are due by August twenty third on, uh, the first wave. There's, there's five residents that they're, they'll be putting on a bid on, just letting you know where that is.
Have the resident, the property owners been notified or what they?
Yes, they were notified by, in fact, the one you would ask me about. They'd never done any work there, so they were kind of wondering what they were talking about, they said they never did any work there.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, then I'll, I'll get with you in reference to that because according to the property owner, they bid.
No, they haven't started anywhere, this is the first wave, and like I said, the bids are due August twenty third on, on, on five of them here.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And, uh, the second one and, and, um, last thing I have, I'll turn it over to Jerry and like I said, Lowell just got on.
Jerry, we.
Okay, so, um, you know, one of the issues that came up is required to have a, um, appraisal of a property that has obtained some, you know, aspects of the, uh, of the fair market value of what we're going to get, uh, from, from fam. The, um, so fam hired a M A I appraiser and, uh, it seems and from my experience and from David's experience and I think Lowell's experience as well, is that the, um, uh, these appraisers are sort of like, um, um, mediators, you know, you want, if you're going to have somebody you want to agree on who you're going to select and, and sometimes we have one person select one, another person selects a different one. And then, um, you, between the three of you, you, uh, between two of you, you agree on another one, um, yeah. So in this case, you know, they have their appraisal, we're suggesting perhaps to get another appraisal ourselves, an M E I appraisal. And if that comes up way off, we'll, um, um, consider getting together paying for a third one and then average the three together. But Lowell had another idea with regard to that, um, perhaps we can get an M E I that does evaluations. Lowell, you want to go ahead and take it over?
Thank you, Jerry. Yeah, I'm here, can you hear me? Can you hear me okay, Jerry?
Does anyone have his phone number perhaps I could call?
Jerry, can you hear me okay? Hello?
Well, I think if you all approve the scenario that I, I just mentioned, the scenario, well, there it is.
Yeah, can you hear me okay, Jerry?
Yes, thanks.
Okay, um, yeah, what, what, uh, what F dot has done on some of their leases is they would have the, the leasing essentially do their own M A I appraisal. And they would hire an M A I appraiser to do what's called a peer review. And the peer review would essentially look at it, see if it's done according to standards, look at their comparables and essentially provide a report to you, uh, with recommendations. And they would recommend either accept, uh, they would have suggestions, uh, for negotiation. Uh, and also if they did not feel it was up to their, uh, what we would call level that you would need, they might recommend you do an, another appraisal. So it's just a way to, uh, essentially get to, uh, looking at their appraisal, which, uh, they are doing M A I. F A A and F dot are both reviewing that scope. Um, and they both have looked at it and provided recommendations for it. And it's a fairly expensive appraisal, these are, uh, I think the number they were quoted was in excess of twenty thousand. So these are pretty extensive appraisals. So that is one option for you to consider is to hire a peer reviewer to look at it, uh, on your behalf and provide recommendations to you, which would be short of a full separate appraisal. Um, but it also would give you the input and advice for you to make final decisions.
How would that cost you at all?
I don't know, we would, we would need to get them to look at it, uh, and get, my guess is it would be, uh, no more than fifty percent of a regular appraisal and probably less. So, and, and it probably would be about a quarter of that. The other, the other thing, uh, to keep in mind is we will have F A A and F dot reviewing their appraisal. And I'm sure they're going to give us input, F dot has their own professional appraisal group. And I could even ask them to take a look at it, uh, if the city wanted them to. And that would be essentially like an M A I peer review as well.
And we could use that one?
I'm sorry.
Could we use the ones that the, um, the other M A I people are to do?
Yes, ma'am, that, that would be the main appraisal. Um, and the peer review would essentially look at it, uh, for reasonableness and completeness. Um, and ensure that it's providing for the city a reasonable approach for the appraisal. And if they had concerns or they had recommendations, they would provide that in their report.
And we don't know how much that peer review is going to cost.
No, ma'am, but we could get an estimate.
Okay.
Uh, pretty quick.
Well, we, we don't want to wait too long because the F A A is asking us the question, what are we going to do? Are we going to accept one appraisal? And so it's sort of like, uh, you know, dot, 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 dot. Are you accepting the one appraisal they're doing? And so, um, uh, we would need a, a, you know, to know from you all, you're going to proceed with that matter. It's cheaper to do this.
Yeah.
But, um, I would leave the option open if we need to, that if that one comes up to be more than half of what it costs to get a regular, um, appra, uh, M A I, would you think it would be better to wait for M A I? Because their, their recommendation of the, of this peer review would be basically, you know, it, it could be that, you know, when you get your own M A I, because this one's not good. Um, uh, in which case we would have spent the money on a peer review and another M A I. But if it's a quarter, if it's a quarter, I can think it might be, that'd be great, great savings.
I agree.
Yeah.
Obviously, couldn't we pursue prices for both at the same time?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think that's probably what we should do.
And, and Jerry, uh, typically what they would do if they found concerns is they would go back to the, the fam appraiser and say, hey, here's a couple of other comparables you might want to consider. And they could have them essentially update their appraisal.
Yeah, as long as.
At their, at their cost.
As long as the, the price is right for that, I think that's a good way to go.
That's, that's exactly right.
We, and I would get a, get a price on the M A I as well as the mayor said, but just in case we can kind of make a comparison.
Sure, absolutely.
And then, um, um, we'll get an approval to go either route depending on which is the best, we want to bring it back to you. Uh, because we, we don't have a long time, we need to respond to F A A, but we could ask, ask for a special meeting to approve this if we need to.
That would be fine.
Okay, so, yeah, you guys have all these question meetings, all right, so, um, that's, I guess that's where, um, I guess we need a motion to approve that.
Yeah, one question, has fam done their appraisal yet? Because they had a original figure that seemed kind of low.
They, they did, uh, what we would call an asset review, it was not a full appraisal.
Okay.
Uh, it was a much less costly review. Uh, the M A I appraisal, uh, we all agreed shouldn't go forward until F A A had reviewed their scope. And that's done now, so their appraiser can move forward at this point.
Okay, I'll make a motion to remove what's a recommendation that Mr. Clary has given us. He gives us two different options.
Okay, we have a motion and second, Jerry is satisfactory.
That's our, excuse me.
Okay. Is there no further questions? We'll call the roll.
County member Gray?
Yes.
County member Johnson?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Thanks a lot, Lowell, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Lowell.
Thank you, Lowell.
Is there anything else for the city manager report?
Uh, just, uh, on fam, the last meeting, I said that we probably have the, the, um, the draft here just for a few things that you need to look at. But it wasn't, um, ready, actually, David Bernard's off this week and enjoying his anniversary after the week, so, um, he's just passed, I was with Jerry Friday, sent out the last draft, um, Jerry Lowell and I are looking at and getting back, but I'm going to go back to fam to, to look at.
And plus, uh, since commission, um, councilperson, so, so Len's not here as well, we thought it'd be best to put it off until we can get it later.
Okay, um, we need to go ahead and keep a bunch of items for next week or we're going to get a change.
We'll, I'll take them. You can leave those here and I'll, I'll replace.
Okay.
Do we need to label because that's what ran out?
I just need the tabs.
Yeah. We got no more tabs, I need anything.
I can order them, I'll order some.
Okay.
All those.
All right, is there anything else for the city manager's report? Is there anything else for the good of the city? See, now I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
In my opposition, we are.